On October 10, 2023, I'll call the order of this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcast. Please join me in a salute to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council has not been made aware of the passing of any military veterans, but I would ask everyone to please join us for a moment of silence to honor all those veterans who have passed. The first item of business today is the approval of the meeting minutes from September 19, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Gallagher is abstaining. We can do this with a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Next item on the agenda is B, announcements from the president. No announcements this evening. Item C, proclamations. We have no proclamations this evening. Item D, citizens' open forum.
Yes.
Yep. Hi, so, yep, perfect, you're a step ahead. If you approach the podium, just state your name and address, and then you have three minutes. I will, I'll give you a quick little nod right before the three minutes is up.
Okay. My name is Adeline Ellenberg. I live at 76 Aldrich Road in Bridgewater. And I see that we have limited time for citizens' comments, so I decided to grab this citizens' open forum to make a few comments in advance of some of the legislation you will be considering. Okay? Temporary absence, I would like that explained before you vote on that, how long that will be, and whether that should even be allowed, other than vacation time. Then there is the term limits matter. And I would ask that the council vote not to accept the restriction of 12 years and then you can't run again. If we are lucky enough to have someone who is superlative, we want that person to be able to continue. We don't have term limits in our federal, so let's leave it at that. Except for president, of course. Then I noticed there is the funding of election signs. Are you planning on paying for the election signs for people who run for council? I would like that answered. And I would, of my personal opinion, say, because I realize I have no vote, that I would hope that taxpayer money does not pay for people's political signs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a quick note on citizen open forum. We can't respond just by our rules, but if throughout the course of the meeting tonight, you'll likely get your questions answered. And then at the end, the councillors can make their own individual comments and can in that time typically address questions that come up.
If I am within the three minutes, I do know that many citizens are deeply offended by the fact that they cannot openly engage at the forum. So I would ask that you amend your bylaws to include public discussion at the time before you take a vote.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to comment?
Good evening. Ed Ivaldi Boxwood Lane. I'd like to make a comment on one of your items on the agenda here. It's item LD, legislation for action. This is the FY22-008, that's the stipend item there. So I see this is the fourth reading tonight. Back on September 5, when you had the third reading, a comment was made about including something about having no benefits associated with this. And I see that that was not included. I was just wondering if the Rules and Procedures Committee, which met on October 3, had that discussion and decided not to put it in, or whether it was just not even discussed. I think this is something that would add clarity to the ordinance, and I know that a lot of citizens are going to be asked on the question when they come to vote on this, our benefits included. And so there's going to be a lot of, you know, having to answer that question. So if it's put right here, then the question's answered right up front. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to comment? Seeing none, I will close citizen open forum. We will move on to E, appointments. We have none this evening. I'll move on to item F, hearings. We have two. The first, I will open the public hearing. The time is 7:06. Open the public hearing for proposed ordinance D, FY22-003, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article 4, Town Manager Temporary Absence. Are there any general questions from the public pertaining to this item?
Yes, good work.
If we do have, if you do have a question, feel free to approach the microphone.
How long will the absence be? Will it be a paid absence? And what is the procedure for caring for town matters in the absence?
I might look, I just have a procedural question for our town attorney. When there are questions, what is the, what is the format for responding to them?
You can respond. I mean, yeah, that's, the dialogue is supposed to occur at that time.
Okay, great, thank you. So maybe let me just give a little bit of background on this specific proposal. So, a few years ago, a group of citizens, residents in Bridgewater, met to review our existing charter and proposed changes. And they created a document that is available on the town's website that is a series of proposed changes to the charter. Some of those changes were then picked up by councillors who sponsored them to move through the procedures to make them official. Through the course of that, a councillor can and often does modify it. It then goes to Rules and Procedures and can be modified. In this specific case, there is existing language about the absence of the town manager. And there was concern that the language was not specific enough, where there could be an absence and there could be some confusion. So the goal with the language that you see in front of you tonight is really to help clarify some points that were potentially confusing. One was how long is an absence, and so this defines that. The second is, and the absence could be due to health, it could be due to a variety of reasons, but when there's some period of time, that's, we then sort of need to take action on it. The second thing that this does is it defines who essentially takes over the duties of the town manager in that scenario, similar to at the national level, there's a, there's a, an order of people. The third is eventually if, if those things fail, it's sort of the backstop, and it gives the town council the ability to act on it. We put an additional language in here to say that a town councillor cannot play the role, so that if it does get all the way through those processes, then there's a backstop where this council has to make a decision. The council cannot elect to put one of its own members in that role.
With, with your...
Actually, would you, yep, there's an additional question? Sure.
With your permission, you did not answer how long is the proposed absence? Would it be paid during the absence? You did answer who would take care of things in the person's absence. Thank you for that.
Yep. So the position is actually a position of the town of Bridgewater. So some of what you're asking about goes through our normal, normal Bridgewater HR processes. And so I think I would encourage you to maybe reach out to the assistant town manager for clarification on how that works. It's the same as any town employee. In this case, we did define, let me get the actual language. We did define, yeah, the absence is 21, I believe it's 21 days, I just want to give you the exact wording. Yep. "In the event of a temporary absence by the town manager of not more than 21 consecutive days, the assistant town manager shall perform the duties of that office." So if the town manager is out for up to 20, 21 days, we did not list, we've had discussions about it, but did not list all of the reasons they could be out because somewhat unpredictable. So this is intended to specifically fill that gap in understanding of essentially our town's constitution, which is the charter. Are there any other questions from the public?
Mr. President, if I could just add maybe a little clarification, there's no contemplation of an absence at this time, so I don't know if, if that's sort of floating out there, but they're certainly not getting rid of me anytime soon, at least for any long period of time.
Yeah.
I hope.
Nope, that's right. And this, again, the idea for this came from residents of Bridgewater looking at that language, finding that it could be somewhat confusing if we had to actually act on it. And so this is a clarification of that. Appreciate the questions. Why don't we move through the rest of the hearing process? So the next question is, does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions from the town councillors?
Just a quick question. In terms of the question on the pay, I would assume, I hate using that word, but normal, like, HR procedures would take place, like, if the person has sick time, or vacation time, or other, I would say sick time, then that would probably kick in within that time period.
So I, I do think it's important maybe to differentiate the intent of this versus our HR policies. So this, this, the wording here is really about, like, who is running that role during an absence, separate from how is the role compensated, and what is the approval process for an absence, and all of those things. I think, I actually don't know the specific policy on those, but I think we could certainly get it through the town.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to point out for the benefit of the public that there are additional considerations beyond the text of this actual proposed ordinance. Certainly, it should be understood that the town manager is employed under the terms of a contract, and to some extent contractual provisions may, in fact, arise in connection with the question that has been raised. And further, there are statutory considerations. For example, the Family Medical Leave Act might be one example where there would be imposition of a statutory provision covering some of the areas that are in question. I just wanted to make that additional comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have any other questions from the town councillors? Okay, seeing none. The time is 7:13 PM. I will now close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay, seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Okay, moving on to agenda item B. Yep, B. I'd like to open the public hearing, actually, the time is 7:13. I'd like to open the public hearing for proposed ordinance D, FY22-007, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article 2, Legislative Branch Term Limits. Are there any general questions from the public?
Yes, as I spoke earlier, thank you for your consideration in letting me speak again. I do think that term limits should not be imposed, that it should be up to the will of the voters.
Thank you. Are there any other general questions from the public? Okay, seeing none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor?
Ed Ivaldi Boxwood Lane. Yes, I support this wholeheartedly. However, I do want to suggest an amendment to this. This was something that was actually mentioned again on the September 5 meeting, at the third reading. And this has to do with a potential loophole that is in here, and it mainly affects district councillors, and it's related to movement between districts. I'm not sure if the committee that discussed this offline talked about this or not, but I'm going to give you an example. So there's a district councillor who is in the second term, 20 months into that second term, and they decide to move to another district. Based on how this is currently written, this councillor can run again for a full three-year term in the new district. So then the question is, what if this councillor decides to do it again? In another two years, they decide to move again, then this whole thing would repeat itself again. Unfortunately, this scenario can be repeated without consequence. So would it ever happen? Hopefully not, but as we all know, our past experience shows us that unfortunately it can happen. So I suggest that the council take another look at this and add some language that would close this loophole before actually taking a final vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Are there any questions from the town councillors?
I just, if I...
Yes, Counselor Gallagher?
If I could, Mr. President, the purpose of this, it came out of the Charter Review Committee that studied this about three years, three, three years ago, and it's to tighten up the current, currently there are term, term limits in our town charter, currently. The discussion did take place whether to propose something that eliminated that or not, and the general discussion, general consensus was not to eliminate the term limits, is to keep the term limits per our charter. However, there was some issues with the language that needed to be tightened up. Some of that language is being tightened up now, although a previous speaker said that a little more tightening needs to be done. But I do, I always go back and forth whether or not we really need to have term limits or not. I mean, who, who really can, can serve for, you know, 30 years anymore? I mean, you don't see that anymore. It's great when you do, but it's always good to mix things up. So if, this ordinance would allow also somebody that is an at-large councillor that decides to run for councillor-at-large...
District.
District councillor. It allows the, the time starts ticking again, so you can, you can do 12 consecutive years as an at-large councillor, and then, and then jump to an, a district councillor for another 12 years. That's 24 years if you want to, if you want to do that. So I'm comfortable with the recommendations to tighten up the language for what we went through a few years ago. But the issue of whether to eliminate term limits was discussed, and it was not really supported from, from the Charter Review Committee that studied this, nor the council. And remember, this needs to go to the voters, too. Even though we took, even though we're going to vote on this tonight, the next step is it got to go to the legislature, it's got to come back to us for the voters of the town to decide on this as well, as, as the previous thing we just voted on, because it needs to go to the voters as well. That's all I have.
Thank you for clarifying. Any additional questions from the councillors? Okay, I think maybe just to reiterate that, this ultimately would extend the current term limit to allow councillors to serve longer than they can under the current, the current language. The problem with the current language is there are some words in there that have led in the past to confusion about what constitutes a term, that sort of thing. And so that's, the intent of that was to tighten up. You know, I think, I also, you know, believe there are probably still scenarios that we haven't thought of, and one that was raised tonight, of someone who's moving to try to kind of skirt the system. I think my perspective on that is at some point, we, we have to sort of make our best guess on what's possible, what's realistic, and what's likely. And so I think the language right now, I think, does cover us in, you know, kind of like the realistic and likely category. Yep. Counselor Perry?
Thank you. Yes, I would agree that, you know, I appreciate the potential situation that was brought up there, but I think it'd be highly unlikely someone would jump from, from district to district where they'd have to move and sell a house, and move and sell a house, again, just to serve on the town council. If they want to have that kind of effort to be on the town council, I probably would laud them for it, but I find that situation probably highly unlikely.
In a year, at least in the discussion, the 24 months, you know, would mean you have a year off in the cycle, and a year off on the council is a material amount of time. Okay, any additional questions from councillors on this one? Okay, seeing none. The time is 7:20. I'll now close the hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay, seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay. We have one opposed, remaining in favor. Moving on, we have item G, license transactions. We have no license transactions this evening. Item H, presentations. We have no presentations this evening. Item I, the town manager's report. The first update is the High Street Bridge closure update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items this evening. I can run through them fairly quickly, fortunately. The High Street Bridge closure update, we have experienced no particular issues with the construct, the removal of the High Street Dam and the construction of the High Street Bridge. That's all great news. Work is generally proceeding as planned. We have, as the council knows, the, the work is pretty much entirely grant-funded, multiple grants requiring a lot of federal, state, and private reporting to, to those funders, and that has all been completed on time, so that grant reporting is going well. And we do know, we know that the road closure will continue to mid-November, and as I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, as the date gets closer, the contractor will be able to give us a more specific timeline. But I will, just for public consumption, and also so that you know, the contractor certainly has no incentive to drag out this, this process, because they're working within a very tight window, which is often referred to as a time-of-year restriction, which is the, the time of year that they can actually be in the water or around the water doing this kind of construction. And that, that is all governed by state and federal law that is protecting certain fish migrations and so forth. So, so that is, that's pretty generally good news. As I had mentioned earlier, we were anticipating a mid-October opening of that road, and it now looks like mid-November opening of that road. So other than that, the process and the project is going well, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Do we have any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, let's move on to item B, mobile station update.
The mobile station update, the landscape designer is finalizing schematic drafts, which can be used for our first public input session, which will likely be in mid-November. The, some of the odd, I shouldn't say odd, some of the challenges that she's looking at are proper handicapped accessibility, which is not a legally required thing, but it's the right thing to do, so we want to make sure that we can properly access the mobile station and then transition to the floral little park next door. So, so we want to also make sure that we can sort of appropriately visually merge the two properties, the little park and the mobile station property, without actually making, we want to make sure that they're distinct properties. We don't want to merge the entire thing and make it look like one property, but we do want to make sure that there's easy access between the two, because I think for future, that will be the appropriate thing to do. We've had some really good discussions with Bridgewater State University, who will, which will be contributing capital funds, and as that commitment firms up, I will certainly let you know what, what that amount and number is. And in the spring, based on the public process that we'll go through on the proposed design in the spring, we'll then go to state grant sources and be applying for grant funding to, to cover the renovation costs of the property and as, as well as the building. So that's a little bit of an update there. Our intent right now is not to use any of the town's capital stabilization funds, we're going to look at other sources of capital funding, but, but we will see how successful we are in the spring with, with grant applications. So that's what I have now, but happy, again, happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Lindy?
Through you to the town manager. In the meantime, while, before, you know, the public input session and everything, I know I spoke to you, is there any way we can do anything with the look of the property in terms of the plywood, and just, just to clean it up a little bit?
That's a great question, and we did have that conversation with BSU and, and the potential for some of their art students to come and, and do some work, probably replace the sort of old peeling fiber board that's there with some pieces of plywood that can be painted on. So that is, that is in the works, and I hope, I hope it comes to fruition, but I don't have any definitive answer on that yet.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Question for Mr. Dutton. Remind me again what our hope is to do with this. I'm sure it's been discussed or shared before. I didn't take good notes.
Ideally, and again, a lot of it will come out of the public review process and the public input process, but a passive recreational facility, bathrooms that are publicly available, possibly food truck parking, so that, so that you can have access to some, some nourishment on the site. And my, my hope is that we have game tables, chess, checkers, a personal favorite is table tennis. But that's, those are some of the ideas that are, that are sort of kicking around. But regardless, we want to create a bit of a park destination with some amenities that are a little more than the typical park. So I guess that's the best way to put it.
And how long do we think this, this might take for this to come to fruition?
Grant applications go in generally May-June. We get answers either August-September timeframe, and in that intervening period, we can be doing a fair amount of work on the structure, regardless of the grant funding possibilities. And then once we get a commitment for grant funding, then we can go out and do an RFP, or if we choose to do the work internally, we can get to work right away. So I would say a year from now, you'll see fairly substantial work going on in that structure, or that property.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions for the town manager, and this, I'm just one for clarification, because I've talked to a few constituents that have addressed something to me. And just, just for the record, as, I, I think that it's pretty clear, however, we do own the property now, is that correct?
We do own the property.
And we have paid for it.
We are, well, that gets into a more detailed conversation.
I don't think we want to, that's not a discussion.
So we haven't, well, it's part of the...
We have allocated funds to pay for what...
Appropriated funds to pay for.
So if we, if we own the property, how come we didn't pay for it? I guess that's my question.
There's several legal matters involving that. Potentially litigation matters, so I don't think it appropriate to discuss in public session.
Well, then how can we do anything with the property if we really haven't paid for it or own it? I guess that's the question.
We own the property. We've taken the property. We've recorded the deed. The imminent domain taking has been recorded. We own the property. The damages, you, those are two separate questions. Do you own the property? And have you paid for the property? In an imminent domain taking, paid for is not in your traditional sense of, I bought property, now the transaction is over. Doesn't work that way. You issue what are called damages, pro tanto damages, based on those who have an interest in the title to the property. Those damages can be challenged for some amount of time. So it's not a traditional, we bought the property, we paid money, and we now own it. So there are technicalities within the question that you're asking that have further technicalities. So I, I think it's important to understand that. I'm happy to discuss it in an executive session, I would answer, or you can call me, I can answer any questions you would like about it. But there are intricate issues that are involved with that particular part of that process.
Okay, so let me ask another question, if I could. We have every right to do what we want to do to that property, then?
Absolutely. Yes. And the technicalities...
We may not ever have to pay for it.
We're going to have to pay for it. It's just a matter of, it's just a matter of how that process looks. It's very, it's, it's super complicated.
As long as we have, as long as, all right, that's it.
But, but I will add to what... But, but I will add to what Mr. Rollins said, there's no technicality that has anything to do with the town. So it all has all to do with the creditors and the, the previous owner of the property.
The longer we can keep the money, the better.
Exactly.
No, it's segregated.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any additional questions? Sorry, we don't accept questions during the meeting. We have a, we have another public comment at the end. All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, we can move to the next item on the agenda.
Fire station update.
Yes, thank you.
The fire station is planning and bid documents are progressing well. The project team will be at your next meeting to give you a more thorough presentation and, and show you the process that, that has been gone through, quite a strenuous process to get to where we are now. I think I mentioned that we had a lot of submissions for pre-qualification. I think I mentioned that at your last meeting. That pre-qualification has now been done, and all the potential subcontractors and general contractors have been pre-qualified. That's great news. It means that we've drawn, you know, quality subcontractors and quality general contractors to this project. We have over 100 submissions or pre-qualified firms, and we know that we have at least five potential bidders on each of the sub, I think there are about 10 different sub, subcontract, and then obviously nine or 10 different general contractors as well, which is excellent news for us. We, we have every belief that it will be a very competitive, a competitive process. Our most recent cost estimate, which we received last week, shows project, total project cost of about $23 million, which is over budget and over our appropriation. But I will remind the council, we won't actually know what it will cost us until we get those bids returned. So, so we're cautiously optimistic. The, the bid, the estimate, rather, has actually come down a little bit since the last estimate we did. So we're hoping to, to, that the actual bids reflect some easing in, in the municipal building market. But I will tell you that we've reviewed a number of different alternative funding sources to try to offset any potential shortfall. There's a 500,000 Green Community Grant, Green Communities Grant. We also have a state technology grant, which, which we would also be eligible for. And, and we're also looking very carefully at special legislation that's working its way through the state legislature now, that would provide a mechanism similar to the MSBA process to, to fund public safety buildings. So, so that we're looking, obviously supporting that and looking at, at any opportunity to reduce the, the cost. We've also looked at, at adding in what are referred to ad alts into the project, which means instead, for instance, means instead of doing a metal roof on the building, that we would do an asphalt roof. So the contractor provides a price for each of those, and then it's our choice which one to choose. If we have, if all the bids come in under, then we can go with a metal roof, presuming that that's more expensive. If we have to cut costs, then we can choose the asphalt roof, which would presumably be cheaper. And those are all built into the bid documents, so that if it comes in over and we can cut some costs with those alternatives, then we don't have to go out and rebid the entire project. So, so that, that we have done as well. So that, that's about what I have on the fire station, but again, happy to answer questions.
Do we have any questions for the town manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the last item, Styles &amp; Hart Parkland Project Update.
And that's a fairly easy one. Plans have been finalized, and the engineer is just preparing the bid documents so that we can get that project out to bid later this month.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the town manager on that one? Okay, seeing none, we will close out the town manager's report and move on to item J, discussions. There are two items tonight for discussion, both introduced by me. The first one is item A, virtual meeting participation. I've received some emails on this. There's also some online chatter, and I know that the council has also had some conversations about this in the past. So this is not something to be voted on this evening. This is a way for us to surface a topic for discussion, and then if one of the councilors is interested in pushing it forward to some sort of legislation, they could. But I did want to share a little background. The general ask that we're hearing is for a mechanism where the community could remotely participate in council meetings. I think some of the, the things you often hear is that the, the time that this is scheduled is, for some people, during commuting hours, so it's difficult to be here in person. For others, it's kind of a time of the evening when they're getting their family sort of ready for bed or school the next day, and so it can also be difficult to participate in person with other just kind of obligations. And so, the, the discussion topic is, you know, what, if anything, you know, could or should the council do to support remote participation at council meetings? And I did want to just share a little bit of background from the attorney, or I think actually from the governor's website, but just a little bit about, you know, sort of some official statements on remote participation and the status of that. So, on March 29th, 2023, Governor Healey signed into law the supplemental budget bill, which included a provision in there that temporarily, you know, sort of extends remote participation. And it does that with sort of three specific points. The first, it says, "Public bodies may continue providing live, quote, 'adequate alternative means,' end quote, 'of public access to deliberations,' and that could include access through telephone, internet, or satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing." The second thing, as it said, this provision allows that any or all members of the public body may continue participating in meetings remotely, meaning we, at our kind of discretion, you know, could participate physically or remotely. And then, there is also an existing open meeting law requirement that says a quorum of the public body and the chair needs to be physically present when a meeting is held. That rule was suspended during COVID and remains suspended. So, you know, through, this sort of extension lasts through March 31st, 2025. And so, at the state level, you know, there, there's a mechanism, at least for another two years maybe, to, to provide for open meetings. A few other things, it says, "Public bodies are not required to provide remote access to a meeting," assuming the meeting is held in an accessible physical location, which this is. And then a few other considerations is that if a meeting is posted as remote and a technical difficulty surfaces, that prevents the, the participation, the meeting needs to be canceled and adjourned and rescheduled. So, it does create a pretty heavy reliance on having strong technical capabilities, because if that, and we've seen glitches in here, if that isn't working, you can't do the meeting. And then, just a last quick note, it says, "Open meeting law does not require that public bodies allow public comment or public participation during meetings." So, that is a decision that we, as a public body, make. Obviously, we're in favor of it. We've added two to our, to our agenda. And it also says that "No person shall address the public body without permission of the chair." And the law does not prescribe the manner that public bodies allow for comment. So I think some people have a sort of a Q&amp;A session, some allow paper submission, like, those rules can change. We, we can dictate those. So the reason I raise all that is, if we do, if, you know, want to consider remote participation at these meetings, we have to make sure that we absolutely have, like, bulletproof technical infrastructure. And then we sort of have to decide what our sort of rules of management and engagement are for that, a meeting in that setting. I did want to raise it just to see if there are any, if others are hearing similar feedbacks and requests, or if there are any perspectives from the council on this topic. And my hope is, through discussion here, we can then discern, determine, or one of you may find interest in turning this into something more formal for the council, if we do think there's support for remote participation. Counselor George?
Mr. President, having been the only town council president not to have an in-person meeting, I'm all for expanding access to the meeting. So I know that we broadcast on Facebook Live. Not everyone's on Facebook. I understand that. The access, I don't have an issue with. The participation is where we run into the problem, because as you stated earlier, the technology is not perfect. And we did have instances where the technology will say, say failed individuals, and it did cause a lot of frustration. I'll even say anger for a few in regards to it being looked like they weren't given access to the meeting, they weren't allowed to speak. It was strictly a technical aspect. So, if we ought to move, if we are to move forward with this, I would, I would support expanding access, but I would not support having participation via any technology, because like I said, it, it just doesn't work all the time. And the last thing I'd want is someone planning on, you know, participating and not being able to get access to the meeting. So that's just my input.
Thank you, Counselor George. Any other thoughts? Counselor Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with that. I think, you know, if the technology isn't 100% there to have it, I think eventually it could be there, and I think it would be wonderful that people could remotely, I can see it up on the screen up there. We could put, you know, public input out there. I think we would need a separate access, I think, for councilors if we then wanted to participate in the meeting. I would say councilors would probably be on this screen if there was a way to split it on up. But again, I just don't know if the technology's there, and until that is perfected, I think it's, you know, you know, putting the cart before the horse a little bit. I know we've, you know, when we're completely remote, and I saw some of those meetings as well, it was, it worked well when everything was remote, but to do a hybrid of the both, I think is going to be a little bit more technically challenging.
Thank you. Counselor Lindy?
Two points. Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's a good discussion point. I want to make sure that we do also check with BTV, and because there are some technical issues between the broadcast and remote participation. When I worked in Stoughton, it was kind of a nightmare. They did Google Meets, which was a whole nother story. We don't do that, thank goodness, but we should check that. And I just, I have a question. I'm just wondering, and I don't know who can answer this. Are the technical, is the, is the, is the equipment still in place in this room to do that? I had heard that it may not be here anymore.
I, I don't know, but I think it, it fits the pattern, I think, that I'm hearing from others too, where this isn't the sort of thing we could just say yes, and then the next meeting, we're turned on. As, it requires investment, it requires a team member who can be there to troubleshoot and these sorts of things. So, maybe as part of us doing a little bit more kind of homework or diligence on the idea, we could get an answer for that.
Thank you.
Unless somebody else knows.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad this has been brought up, for sure. I know I've asked it individually, having participated during the pandemic in FinCom virtually. And we, I definitely have heard from multiple folks in the community that have requested it as well. I think everyone's commented to the, okay, we got to do our due diligence and figure out from a technical standpoint what is feasible. I'm sure we'll have some limitations. I would also love to add to that list, if we could not do this hybrid or virtual, to still find other ways today, if we're going to be in person, to find ways to be inclusive for people to engage. So if we're, you know, for instance, if we're, you know, is it possible for people to submit comments for public comment that we could read for them if they can't be here, that sort of thing? That feels like a very reasonable request of us as councilors, right? Is there a way to be able to, you know, look at a Facebook Live feed, and if people are commenting? Do you know what I mean? Like, there's aspects around that of sort of like, what are those workarounds? Because I understand that technology isn't always perfect. It may be costly, et cetera. But I think if we continue to just overall look at ways of how can we be inclusive, is still really beneficial for, for everybody. The other thing too is, since I have asked this individually to town administration, I do know that one of the things that had come up was the fact that there also becomes a parity issue for other committees. So I think that we would need to address that very clearly around, you know, would this be, it probably would not be feasible to be realistic for every single committee and public meeting that is conducted if we think about the number of committees and the number of meetings and the resources that it takes for all of that as well. So, just something to add there.
Thank you. Great comments. Counselor Gallagher?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'm, and I'm all for, the more the public gets involved in our meetings, the more feedback we hear, the better. And, but I agree with what Counselor George was saying. We, we need to, you know, kind of tread lightly as we move forward with this, because the technology isn't always there. It's not always on our side either. It could be the person that's trying to get through doesn't quite have the right technology and so forth to get through to us. But keep in mind, there are really only two portions of our meeting where the public can really participate, and that's open forum and citizens' comments, beginning and the end of the meeting, notwithstanding any presentations we have from outside organizations that come in to present to us. So when you talk about public participation, it's more for the open forum and the citizens' comments portion of the meeting, because other than that, it's really dialogue amongst us and, and town officials. What I'd like to see is continue the discussion or come up with some sort of plan. I agree. And I know there are already, there are boards that meet totally remotely, and their presenters are remotely, are participating remote into that. But remember, the, the term remote participation, we've always had remote participation as councilors before even 2020. I mean, if you weren't able to come to a meeting, you could still call in. When we had a few councilors that called in when they were out on business and, and called in on a phone, we, we've already allowed that for us. So that, you know, is still there. You can call in as a counselor, and if we wanted to. But I do think the final piece that needs to be solved is how do we get the public engaged in our meetings remotely? How do we do that? Is it, is it, you know, through, through Facebook Live and reading the feed? Sometimes you don't want to, you might not want to read what they're saying. But I assume we're still being broadcast live on BTV as well at the same time?
We are.
Yeah. So right now, we're Facebook Live and we're BTV Live, so our meeting is live. It's just, you know, the only portion of the meeting the public could participate would be open forum and citizens' comments. But I'm all for as much as we can, we can allow them to participate.
Thank you. Yep, actually, Counselor George?
Yep. Just for clarification, also you have to include hearings. The public does have the ability to participate in hearings, so that, that's another.
Presentations, yeah.
Yes.
Counselor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a note for our consideration. I, I know the suggestion was just made about the ability of the public to perhaps submit comments in advance of a meeting. And I just wanted to point out that we've had the experience in the past of email submissions. And the difficulty with that, and I think that this was pointed out by Attorney Rollins at the time, is that we can't be sure of the authorship of a message that would be received in that manner, frankly. And, you know, that, that raises a lot of issues. And I think that may also carry over into the notion of comments being made online through Facebook Live, because those users, correct me if I'm wrong, are often not using their full actual name, but they're using some type of screen name. And we need to know, in fact, that the person is who they claim to be and that they are, in fact, a citizen of the town. Because when people come to our podium, they must identify themselves by name and their street, and we should expect no less from remote participants.
Great, thank you. Yep.
Just a quick question, Mr. President, is, if it's possible, maybe we can get some sort of report or information from our IT department about what is possible, what do we have in place, what more would need to be done to get something up and running like that? But I think that would be a good next step to here from our IT department.
Counselor Robinson?
Just wanted to throw out one more suggestion too. Perhaps there could be a cadence of, if we're meeting twice a month, one is, like, the first meeting of the month is always virtual or in person, and then we alternate. I realize that could present some challenges as well, but we're just having discussion, so thought I'd throw it out there.
Good. Any additional questions from the council or comments? So maybe if I just share my thoughts, I think these are great ideas. So maybe if I just share my thoughts, I think these are great ideas. I think the, the realities of needing to, you know, kind of confirm someone's identity and make sure that they're representing their own words, I think is a real one. You know, the, the reality of us having to follow some state mandated requirements on sort of how the public participates is a real one. You know, the idea about technology kind of needing a support plan and predictability across all of the different meetings we have is a great one. And I do think, you know, within the boundaries of all of that, the idea that maybe there are some creative ways where we can have people participate within those boundaries, you know, and, and allow the public to be more involved. So appreciate all the, the great thoughts. I think, why don't I do a little bit of homework and maybe bring it back for a second discussion? And then with that homework, we can figure out whether or not maybe after that, it should go to a committee to do some more, more brainstorming? Does that make sense?
Okay.
Great. So with that, I will close that out. Just a quick reminder, we do have a citizen comment later on in the meeting where opinions can be shared on that. We do have one more quick discussion. This is item J dash B, Town Council Funding of Election Signs. We had a, at a prior meeting, the town clerk presented an idea where perhaps the town council could fund yard signs to let people know that an election is coming up. And we had some kind of brief, brief in the moment conversation. I did want to resurface this and put it in context of maybe a larger discussion to see just generally sort of what the council thinks about it. So some, some thoughts on this one is in general, I think it's part of a larger, my perspective of it is it's part of a larger just communication strategy. What things do we want to make sure the town knows about? And of those things, what role, if any, does the town council play in helping to promote them versus kind of volunteer organizations? And I think the tricky thing with this one, the idea was, you know, we would put, the town council would provide some money, of which we have very little, but we would provide some money so that the town could, could essentially advertise elections in the hope that we don't miss anybody who might want to participate. And then after that, you know, these signs would sort of exist and volunteers would kind of manage them. I think that's one of many things we need to communicate on. And I think there's also a question of are people not showing up because they didn't know the election occurred? Or are they not showing up because they're not aware of the issues? Or are they not showing up because, you know, they don't feel like they're involved in the town? I think there's just more work. If we're going to spend money and kind of really put together a communication strategy, I think there might just be more work for us to actually do that and say, what are the, what is the town looking for from us? How do we prioritize those things of which elections might be the top or it might be the bottom? I don't, I don't know, but, but do we have a communication strategy as a town council to engage with the public? And so I, I did want to resurface this rather than just sort of push this through as, okay, we'll kind of spend the little budget we have on this. I wanted to make sure we did have some discussion of, you know, is there a first step where we really say, okay, what is our communication strategy? And maybe Community and Economic Development Committee could, could kind of like help us craft that. And then we say, okay, within that, kind of how does this specific ask fit? That's the thinking.
Yeah, Counsel Gallagher?
You know, I, I think it's probably a good idea to have camp, have election signs out there that there's an election. These signs, and I, I just want to clarify that these signs would not be candidate signs. It would just be a simple sign that says, April 28th, town election, just to remind people of an election, not, not an advertisement for the candidates that are running there. That's certainly not, not the intent here at all. And I have plenty of signs for people if they want one. But the, the, some towns that I drive through, and you guys all see this too, do have signs and people put them in their yards or they put them on public property that town election Saturday, April 28th. You won't want to put the year on there because the year changes every year. The, the day might change, we'd always put a sticker over that. But as we talked about before, about having remote participation, we're trying to find a way to make more people engaged in our meetings and ask the questions, the same with elections. You want to try to reach out to as many people as you can to remind them of an election. We always hear this every year, I didn't know there was an election. You know, we just had a very successful, you know, workshop on the vision to reality where there was a lot of advertising. Let's face it, there was a lot of promotion for this to hear people's input and it gathered to about 250 people. That's less than vote, less than turns out to vote, but you got a lot of people engaged, but it took a lot of advertising, it was a lot of effort behind, behind that. And there are still those that say they didn't know about it. So no matter what you do, you're always going to have those that, that just aren't paying attention or just miss it. But I'm all for something like this and I think it would add, but I don't think we need 250 of them. But I really do think this should fall within the purview of the town clerk's office and not so much us. But if, if, I mean, I, I don't know who's responsible for the signs that are in town that goes out and changes, changes your taxes due November 1st. I don't know who does that, but I, I wouldn't be opposed to this. The more we can engage people, you know, if there's absolutely no competition in, in an election, is it, you know, we need to perk up people running for office as well. So I'm not opposed to this at all, but you know, I think it should fall within the purview of the town clerk's office, just on the surface of this, and we should provide the funding for them to be able to reprint them.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Yeah, Counsel Gallagher definitely stated a lot of things I would agree with. Ultimately, again, I think it's a good idea to, to promote and advertise, as I said, when the town clerk was here. It depends on the election. If there's a contested race, then people might come out for it. If there's no contested races and no major questions on a ballot, it's not going to bring out a lot of people, no matter how many signs you put on out. But again, a lot of communities do put signs out to advertise. I think that a procedure would definitely need to be determined, who puts out the signs? I don't think we need, you know, each councilor taking 10, 15, 20 signs, being responsible for them and spreading them around town. But, you know, if we can get our highway department involved or whatever it might be to, to spread, you know, signs throughout the town in, in common locations would be a, a, a good thing. I think the sign would definitely need to be designed so we could change the date easily. Maybe it's a white sign as opposed to a colored sign, so we're not tearing off the color off the sign or at least a space where there isn't any color there, you know. So again, some thought needs to go into the design process of the sign. But again, I think it's, it's a good idea, the funding of which, again, I, you know, just want to make sure it's an appropriate source for the funding of where that money's coming from to pay for the signs. But I think in the long run, it's a good idea to, again, improve the communication about, you know, the election itself. But those are the concerns that I would have.
Thanks. Any additional thoughts? Yep, Counsel Lindy?
Echoing what my two fellow councilors already said, there are some towns that do the, the permanent metal signs that are put up on signs and it does have a way to change the date, has like the town seal on it. I personally think that's a way we should also explore and figure out where the money's coming from. I don't know whether, you know, I think it does belong in the town clerk's purview too, but in those other towns, I think the DPW puts up the signs on the metal signposts and does multiple signs at different parts of the city or town.
Yeah. That's helpful. And maybe just a few other thoughts. I think I'm hearing a few consistent things. One is we should probably define who kind of owns what messaging. So, you know, is this us maybe? Do we, obviously we all support the ideas. And then the second question is sort of how do we communicate, right? Is it a sign? Is it managed? The, the, the other thing I, I would just throw in is we, we really don't have a lot of money, like $600 maybe? And if we had $600 to spend, would we spend it all on signs or would we say, hey, maybe we do a mailer instead or maybe we? So I, I think, I guess what I'm proposing is since we're all in support of, of an idea that helps us communicate, it might be good for maybe Community and Economic Development to think through just a larger communication strategy that maybe, and maybe come back and propose that to us of, you know, these are the topics that we think the council could and should take forward. These are some ideas we could explore and then we could just sort of decision this in the context of that. Does that sound good? Okay. So I think maybe if we could, if we could do that as an action, and just for anybody's watching, you know, you are hearing universal support. We are trying everything we can to make sure that the information we have is shared with everybody and we're collecting information back. So please feel free to share your ideas with us as well. This is really important to us. So, okay. Any additional comments on that before we close it? Okay. Seeing none?
I have a comment in the open period.
Okay, we're almost there. And thank you for sticking with us. We're, we're getting through it. Well, that ends item discussion. We have K, Committee Reports. We have no committee reports. Item L, we have Legislation for Action. We have.
Mr. President? Oh, I'm sorry. I would just advise that the Rules, Rules and Procedure Committee did meet last week with respect to items D and E under Legislation for Action, and we can address those recommendations in turn at that time.
Oh, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have any other committee reports? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. So item L, Legislation for Action. The first item on the agenda is Resolution R, FY24002. This is First Responders Day. I would defer to Counselor McKinnon if there's anything additional you'd like to say about this one?
Nothing additional. That wasn't already said, no.
Okay. So this was not referred to any committee per our last meeting and decision. The 14 days has elapsed and so it may be finally considered this evening. I would entertain a motion to approve.
No move. Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Okay. Yeah, Dr. Perry?
I'm not sure if at the last meeting was introduced, was ever read into the record as far as what was in this particular resolution? And should we read it into the record before we vote on it?
Yeah, that's, that is a great point. I do not, I don't think we read it into the record.
We did. I recommend we read it.
Okay. Thank you. Let me find it.
I don't have it in front of me.
Originals are around here somewhere.
Yeah, I, so I think I have a copy of.
Page 12. Yeah, I can, I can read it if you want.
That's fine.
Okay. So I'll read this on behalf of Counselor McKinnon. This is Resolution R, FY24002, First Responders Day. Whereas first responders include firefighters, police officers, nurses, doctors, military personnel, and anyone else that works in the healthcare fields. And whereas first responders are a vital part of the community and risk their lives and selflessly run into danger to protect residents. And whereas we ask more of our first responders today than ever before. And whereas first responders are highly trained and undergo extensive education, training, and personal sacrifice to develop the expertise required to respond to emergency situations. And whereas the families of first responders also deserve appreciation and respect for the sacrifices they make in order to support their loved ones' service. And whereas hundreds of first responders are killed in the line of duty each year in the United States. And whereas we should honor the brave, selfless, and compassionate heroes who save countless lives every day and pay tribute to those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, does hereby proclaim that each year, the last Saturday in April, will be known as First Responders Day to the Town of Bridgewater and urge all citizens to recognize and honor the sacrifices that first responders make. So that is the resolution that we're voting on. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we can take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to item B, Order O, FY24010, Loan Authorization Waterwell Number 5A Replacement. I'll defer to the town manager for a quick overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this and the order following it, the loan authorization for well nine are both virtually identical. One replaces an existing well at the Carver's Pond Pump Station and the other one replaces a well at the High Street Well Field. These are loan authorizations. These put us in line to be able to qualify for state revolving fund, funds for, for both of these planning and construction processes. And the entire cost of the well, the planning, the, the testing, the permitting, and then the ultimate construction is projected to be around or a little less than a million dollars. So each of these is a million, is an, is a $1 million loan authorization.
Thank you. Any questions for the town manager? Okay. Budget and finance meeting this evening voted three to zero to approve or to recommend. Finance committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 10 to 23 meeting. I would entertain a motion to refer to advertising.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we can take a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion to refer to advertising passes. Item C, Order O, FY24011, Loan Authorization Waterwell Number 9 Replacement. I would defer to the town manager. Any additional comment?
Same thing I said before.
All right.
Just about exactly.
This is number two. At the budget and finance meeting this evening, they voted three to zero to recommend.
Yes.
The finance committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 10 to 23 meeting. I would entertain a motion to refer to advertising.
No move. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to item D, Proposed Ordinance D, FY22008, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article 2 Legislative Branch Annual Stipend. We spoke about this at the last meeting. I would see if anyone else would like to add comment to this one? Yep, Counsel McKinnon?
Mr. Valdi kind of made a good point with the benefits. I think maybe we should look into changing the language before we push that forward anywhere.
Okay. So I think we could do that in a few ways. We could entertain a motion to refer back to rules and procedures to consider the benefits language. Or if you have proposed language, you could propose a motion to amend.
Mr. President, we can entertain amendments right here on the floor, can we not?
We can.
Yeah. Which one would be going off of the proposal from before the rules and procedure or what rules, what we said on rules and procedures? Because I'm seeing two different languages here.
We may want to clarify that what you're referring to, Counselor, are the notations that I provided to each of the councilors this evening.
Yep.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
From the Rules and Procedures Committee meeting of last week. And in that handout, what I've done is to firstly, refer to the language that was referred to our committee in that first paragraph, language referred to R and P. And in the second paragraph, I've given the text of a proposal that was discussed but not voted on and not approved at the committee. We simply discussed it. The short story, for the benefit of everyone listening, is simply that the issue that, one of the issues that was referred to rules and procedures was the confusion that we encountered as to how we could, how, frankly, if we could include in the language of the charter provision, language that would allow for both an initial kind of base level stipend for councilors and some provision for an escalator, something that would, over a period of time, allow for an increase. And you'll remember from our council meeting that it was made clear, clear to us, I think by Attorney Rollins, that the initial notion we had, which was to simply do that potential increase if and when it came time to consider that, to be done by an ordinance, and that would be inappropriate because it would be contrary to what the charter itself specified. So the proposal that I've indicated in that second paragraph, this is what we discussed at the meeting first. We were trying to resolve this question that was put to us, referred to us by the council. Is there a way that we can provide an initial stipend within the charter and also some provision that would allow for potentially some years down the road, an increase over a period of time? And the proposal that I put together was, which we did not vote, we did not approve it, but we discussed it at length, was to, in addition to having a, a floor, a base amount, which is that $5,000 amount, in addition to that, have a ceiling, have a maximum amount. In other words, by having both In other words, by having both the minimum and the maximum in the charter language, there would be no need in the future to try to amend the amount by ordinance. It would all be right there in the charter. Right? And I picked, just as a matter of convenience, a figure of $10,000, you know, kind of being an amount never to be exceeded, just to give some comfort to the citizens that there's a ceiling, you know, in the law, in the charter that says we can't go above that amount. Nonetheless, we discussed this, but we did not vote on it. We moved on from it in committee. But I wanted the counselors to know that we at least did try to give an answer to the question of, that was raised and given to us, referred to us. The final paragraph shows the actual language that we voted then approved. And I'll just read what I have. As amended, here's what it says. Each, each member of the Town Council shall receive an annual stipend payable in arrears in the amount of $5,000, and the Town Council President shall receive an annual stipend payable in arrears in the amount of $7,500. We struck this language that follows, which was from the council's recommendation, the council's referral, which read, "This may from time to time be adjusted by ordinance and approved by the majority of the qualified voters of the Town of Bridgewater." Well, we knew we couldn't do that, so in committee, we struck that language. But we added additional language, which reads, "Incumbent counselors shall receive a stipend as above set forth as of each annual town election day." We felt it important to actually define the term for which the payment, the possible payment of a stipend would apply. So, basically, we're following an election day to an election day term. And it went on to, we went on to agree, "A counselor who vacates their office will be entitled to receive a prorated stipend as of the last date of their service." So, I simply provided those comments because I wanted the council to know that we attempted, in good faith, to answer the question, or one of the questions that was specifically put to us, and we made the other relatively minor modifications that I've just indicated.
Thank you. So, the language then coming back before us to be considered is the amended language that returned from rules and procedures.
Right. In fact, if you look at your agenda materials, the second page shows the recommended, the language that was recommended by the Rules and Procedures Committee.
Thank you. Okay. So, just, just to make sure everyone's clear, the language that we're considering just off the bat is on page 19 of your packets. It is the same as the bottom paragraph that Counselor Chase distributed.
Can I make an amendment for, after the $7,500, it says with no included benefits?
Yep. So, we have a motion on the floor to amend. And a second? Any additional discussion?
Can I, can I make a friendly suggestion? I know what you're trying to do, Counselor. I, and this is up to you, but under a salary, I would add herein something to the effect of regardless of compensation, the Town Council will not be eligible for benefits.
Sounds neater than what I said, so.
What's that?
I said, "It's neater than what I said, so."
So, the, so regardless of compensation, members of the Town Council...
Shall not be eligible for benefits through, through the town.
Yeah.
The Town Council shall not be, I just want to make sure.
So, that kind of covers it as it grows down the road. It doesn't matter how much the council gets paid, they're never eligible for benefits.
Okay. And then that language is being inserted...
In a salary after the last sentence, where it says herein, period, regard...
I think it's the, the lower one is the one we're acting on.
That was only proposed draft.
Yeah.
It's one we discussed.
But I think we could, we could just close that. So, the, the current last sentence is, "A counselor who vacates their office will be entitled to receive a prorated stipend as of the last day of their service." We could just add the language right there. Regardless of compensation, members of the Town Council should not be eligible for benefits. Is that, that's the motion? Okay. So, we have a motion to amend with that language at the end. We have a second, and then we're open for discussion on that language. Counsel Robinson?
Just a question. Should it actually say salary or should it say stipend? Because it's not a salary. So, I'm just being technical here.
It does say stipend.
I think this was the, I think salary was proposed.
Okay. So, then, so it was changed below?
Yeah. The actual one says stipend.
Okay. Well, because you all were talking about under salary. So, I think we meant...
Yeah.
In the proposed paragraph.
Agree. If anybody sees anything that says salary, the intention is it is a stipend. And for those watching today, the Town Council is a volunteer with, with no compensation at all. This is a proposal for a stipend to cover expenses of...
Okay. Otherwise, I'm good. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Yeah, question?
Just a, just a couple of questions. Was there any discussion, if I could, to you, Mr. President, to the members of the committee of, you know, how did you come up with arrears? You wanted to pay it annually, not on a monthly basis? That just made sense?
Well, yes, actually, to respond to you, we did consider the fact that there were bookkeeping implications, and it would be burdensome for the town, for example, if somehow we needed to provide for payment on a monthly basis or something like that. We were trying to do this as, as simply as possible. And so, we stuck with the idea that, you know, the recommendation was, in council, that we have an annual stipend. So, we tried to fashion it to coordinate with a term, an annual term, which we did, as I said, from town election day to town election day. And in terms of the actual payment, you know, that's a matter that the town administration, operationally, through our Human Resources Office, is far better positioned than we are to make specific judgments about, you know, how is it going to be doled out? How is it going to be, you know, when are the checks received? We weren't concerned about any of that.
Okay.
We were simply trying to set the, the calendar and move ahead on that basis.
Understood. Thank you. The next question I have, Mr. President, and I don't know if the town attorney wants to chime in on this, but is it possible that if this particular amendment of how, where it says that no Town Councilor shall be eligible for any of the town benefits, is it, is it, I know some towns have this in, but is it possible the legislature could take that out if it supersedes, if, if state law dictates that if someone is paid a dollar, they're eligible for X? Have you heard, had any history about that? Or do towns, can, towns can put this in there? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it'll be fine putting that in there. I mean, certainly, they're going to let us know.
Sure.
Right? They're going to strike it and say, absolutely not. I don't, on its face, see an issue with you putting it in. If it comes back and it's taken out, then it comes back and it's taken out. Right? But, yeah, just on its face. I haven't done any research in that way, so it's hard for me to tell you for certain. But I don't, I don't think it's a problem on its face.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
I forgot. I had another question. Probably for Counsel Chase, maybe. Where would this be funded? What fund would this come from, since this hasn't, this stipend hasn't existed before?
Our budget, our proposed budget, fiscal year to fiscal year, would need to provide for that aggregate amount.
Okay. So, we haven't gotten to that level of detail?
That's right. And obviously, there's, this is, this is nothing of any immediacy. This is so far down the road that there will be ample time for each annual fiscal year budget to provide inclusion of the appropriate disbursement.
Okay. Appreciate that. I just know that the community will want a lot of transparency around this.
Right.
And I think that's a fair thing to ask.
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Perry?
Thank you. The President to the committee as well. So, I see obviously the proposed language that was discussed about, you know, the ceiling, and we're not really including that now in, in what was determined here at the bottom. What would be then the procedure going forward for any future escalations if we don't include that language into what's written down below?
That's correct. And because we don't have language for the future possibility of an increase beyond the amounts that are here, it would require a charter amendment.
I see.
It was the only way that we thought, we felt confident about, I think I'm speaking for the committee, but correct me if I'm wrong, that we felt confident that we could propose something that would have both a floor and a ceiling and thereby avoid the need for future changes by ordinance, which would be contrary to the charter. So, because of that, we, we really just, in our discussions, just passed on over it and went right down to the remaining items we thought important.
All right. So, based on that situation, I'm not sure if we would want to potentially refer it back to that committee for further discussion on that. I'm not sure if that would be the, the council's wishes on this, because again, going forward, without further charter changes based on, you know, what we're proposing on the bottom, I kind of agree. It's, it is, the language is good in the sense that it sets a floor and a ceiling, and it creates the ability for any future, you know, councils to set whatever situation that they need based on the, the current budget. We have the good budget year, then, you know, potentially, there could be an escalator. If it's a bad budget year, they could bring it down. But at least gives them a range that each council could decide what would be appropriate. So, you know, I'm just, I'm kind of liking the language that was proposed but not discussed. So, I just would like to hear from other counselors on their thoughts on it, and should we refer it back to the, to the committee before voting on this to see if that language should be included going forward?
Mr. President, if I, if I may, one suggestion, what we might do is actually seek an opinion of council as to that floor and ceiling provision and see if, if he feels that's something that is worth pursuing.
Like I said, I haven't looked at this. I don't know what had been contemplated. I'm happy to look into whatever you want me to on that. I, I think that's a better alternative than leaving it open-ended. I don't love the idea of a, something that's written in the charter having flexibility. And that's where I get a little hesitant. And in, in this particular circumstance, obviously, I would assume that it would be approval by you all and the voters, because that adds kind of another layer of protection conceivably. But if it is only you all, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant about the idea of things changing. But obviously, if there's a floor and a ceiling, you know the rules of the game. Right? So, there's probably, there's probably some leeway there. I'd need to see probably a little bit more specific language. We'd probably have to discuss that, and then how it would be voted specifically. I think probably you want citizen involvement if you're voting on your salaries or stipends. So, that, that's, those are just kind of my initial thoughts on that. I think a floor and a ceiling is, is a good idea if you want flexibility, because then at least there are parameters. Right? I don't like the idea ever of creating a part of the charter that's subject to your change without going through a charter change. I have a lot of issues with that generally, because if you're saying something in the charter, that's like our town's constitution. Right? So, I want that to be as specific as possible and not be easily changed unless the voters of Bridgewater want that change. Right? So, so that's just me generally. That's how I look at the charter, period. But, so, but I think a floor and a ceiling at least gives the rules of the game. So, it's a little bit different than saying, "We can just change this whenever," kind of thing.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to move Proposed Ordinance D, FY22-008, to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Let me actually just act on the first motion to amend, and then I'll accept the second motion to vote. So, right now, we have an open motion on the floor. Oh, sorry. Was there additional discussion on the motion?
I was going to make another motion, so. Make your way through those two.
Let me get control of this thing.
There's a pending motion to amend.
We, we have a pending motion to amend.
By order of priority, that...
That, that takes...
Let's just read the...
Yep. So, just, just a reminder, we are voting on the language, or the, the existing language is page 19. The motion is to amend that by adding the following sentence to the end. Regardless of compensation, members of the Town Council shall not be eligible for benefits through the town. So, we have a motion, a second. We've had discussion. I think we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor of that amendment say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. So, the language in front of us is now the amended version. And then we have a motion to postpone until our next regularly scheduled Town Council meeting.
Correct.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Yep, we have a second for discussion?
The only thing I would suggest is between now and that next meeting, if we could go back to the subcommittee for further discussion on, on the other proposed, you know, language that we can discuss further at the, at the next meeting.
Yep.
Isn't that a different...
I think that might be, so I think we have two paths. I think one, yeah, I think one is we have a path where we, as the council, could potentially get legal opinion on the language as written and parameters for making changes. And then maybe we bring that up at the next meeting and figure out a path based on legal advice. Counsel Robinson?
Okay. I think, I think you may have explained it, but I was actually curious why we're motioning to move this to the next meeting. Are we ending the discussion now or...
That would, that would be my proposal, waiting on Town Attorney's opinion in regards to this. I don't, I don't think he's prepared to make that, and I, I don't think the council should move on it till we actually have a legal, legal opinion that if we do approve this, you know, we can go forward.
Okay. And then can I make one more comment, just in terms of the discussion? The floor to ceiling piece, I actually, from, from my perspective, I was just curious. It felt like that required a lot more explanation of what would, what would be, what would precipitate a variance. Right? Like, and whether or not the town, you know, we vote on it, the town votes on it, et cetera. But sort of the, if we're going to make this floor to ceiling range, well, then we would also need to put in parameters of why it would fluctuate and how it would fluctuate, and then who gets to, to vote on it. So, that felt like a much bigger exercise. So, I don't know if I'm necessarily saying I'm agreeing with Attorney Rollins, but I'm like, it sort of felt like, I felt like the cleaner it is, and then any kind of variance in the future would have to be another charter change, felt like the most proper way and simplest, more direct way to be able to make any changes in the future. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon?
So, during the meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but I believe me and you shut the whole ceiling down because we didn't want to give out any raises or anything. We just wanted it at that. And I do see now, through what Jason's saying, that maybe we should, the ceiling doesn't have to be 10,000, it could be something else, but we probably should have a ceiling on there, just what Jason said along. The ceiling could just be 5,000 and 7,500, but there probably should be a ceiling on there.
I appreciate it. Yeah. So, I think, maybe let me just sort of summarize. I think I'm universally hearing, we're, we're not sure on this language yet. Like, we have to do a little more homework on this one. And I think we're also saying, what we can legally do is probably the first piece of information that might inform which of the different paths we take. So, I think for me, I like the idea of us postponing it to the next meeting, and in the meantime, we can connect and get a legal opinion on boundaries. The next meeting, we can reintroduce that and then pick whether or not do we refer back to committee? Do we amend in real time with that information? And give counselors time between now and the next meeting to just do a little more kind of homework on this one. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table to postpone until...
I'll second that motion.
In a second? Any additional discussion on that? Okay. We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
Yeah, bro. If I can just be sent what the version that it was amended to in just one form, just so I know what I'm working from? That would be great.
Do you want one right here?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell which, is, so is it the bottom form just...
Bottom form has a sentence added to it.
That's right.
Yeah. So, that was a great discussion. Thank you. We've got one more. We have item E, Proposed Ordinance D, FY22-009, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article 3, Elected Officials Recall Provision. And I would entertain a motion to refer to advertising.
If I may, Mr. President, I'm sorry, just as a point of order really, but we did discuss last time. Let me make sure I have my facts right. I'm sorry. I apologize. This does refer to... This does refer to Town Charter, Article 3, elected officials, as it should. You remember, we had.
I think we corrected it, yes.
I was afraid we were going down that road again.
Oh, no.
But okay, we're.
We might be, so stay diligent, yeah.
There's still a typo on it.
So I think if you notice a typo or have any amendments, we could, so right now, there's, I would entertain a motion to refer to advertising, and then a second for discussion, so we could discuss it.
Mr. President, I don't believe this is the most updated, based off the Rules and Procedures Committee, correct?
Well, in other words, if you're looking at page 20, which page?
Page 20.
Page 20. Page 20, that's right. Page 20 is not, however, page, well, no, page 10 does not.
Okay. So it looks like we don't have.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think, if you look on page 23, you will see the recommendations that were made by Rules and Procedures.
I see. So it's the, it's the language on.
They're fairly minimal, but we can address any of them. We, we did firstly make the, make these terms gender neutral with respect to his and her, or he, she. We made those respective changes. And we did strike at the words in the original proposal, the words involuntary commitment, it reads, of a medical health facility, I think it's intended to actually read involuntary commitment to a mental health facility, because there was sensitivity in the council at our first reading, at our last reading of this, over that particular issue. We did have some extensive discussion in Rules and Procedures about that very point. I pointed out to the council members, the committee members, that there are actually three statutory provisions in Massachusetts relative to commitment to a mental health facility, and they, you know, one of which concerns itself with substance abuse. And another section of the statute deals with civil commitment for a very limited three-day period for persons who have largely, it's the case of persons who have expressed the likelihood of endangering themselves or others. And finally, there is a, an entirely different section of the statute that deals with criminal involuntary commitment. It specifically mentions the town of Bridgewater, of course, because we are host to the Center for Sexually Dangerous Persons. So those are the three provisions, of which I'm aware, statutory provisions that actually deal with the subject of involuntary commitment of a person. And the reason we devoted time to considering this, and we struck that language, and the fact that I'm bringing it up right now, is simply that I think that there was some feeling among the councillors last time that we were somehow referring to people who are simply undergoing a period of anxiety, or they may be under medication, or, you know, in therapy, things like this, and that's not at all the case. We're not talking about anything like that. We're talking about actual instances where individual civil liberties are being restrained for reasons of public safety largely, and their own personal safety. So just to clarify that, I did not include that language, as you know. This language came lock, stock, and barrel from another town's bylaws. They chose to include it. I expressed to the council, to the committee members, I had no particular preference one way or the other, if we left it in or took it out, but because there was some sensitivity among the council members, we decided, well, let's just take it out.
Right. Thank you. So just to sort of recap the state of what we're reading versus the content, and I appreciate the background. So the version that we have that runs on page 20 and 21, 22, is the unamended language that went to the committee. The committee has made the suggestions for changes that are listed on page 23, but they're not yet reflected back in the actual document.
That's right.
To sync the three, sorry, to sync the two, there is a suggestion that we change the use of the term his/her to their in section B4, also in section B4, replace the words he, he slash, slash, she with the words the official, and then in B5, completely remove the words involuntary commitment to a mental health facility. So what we're being asked to act on is the version with those changes. Do we have any, any, yeah, Counsel Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do appreciate the work the committee has done, particularly to remove that, that sentence regarding mental health. However, I still think that this language that we got from another community is still too intrusive on someone's personal life, and not their ability to serve the town of Bridgewater, and it's very subjective. A person can be, may be recalled, and then you list a host, the host of offenses that could result in a recall. But if the person is well-liked, people might just turn their eye and say, oh, well. But if the person has just taken a vote on something very controversial, and not well-liked, and they run into an issue, they're gonna be recalled. So it's a very subjective, could be subjective.
If I may, Counselor, on that specific point, we actually have a particular provision that covers that instance of a policy matter or vote, which cannot be used as the grounds for which a recall petition under this ordinance can be brought forward.
Right, but if that person had taken a vote on something controversial in the town, and then, you know, two months later, they were, they were convicted of drunk driving, they could be, they could be recalled.
A conviction, yes.
Because people might not particularly care for that person. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not tying it to an actual vote.
We're not omniscient. We can't rebound.
So it's a personal, and, and I'm not saying any of these things that happen are certainly, you know, they're bad things, and, and public officials are always put up to a higher standard, but I think this is too intrusive in someone's life. What's the definition of lack of fitness?
You could motion to strike that.
I don't know. I think that, you know, 50% of the meetings missed is subject to potential recall. I mean.
You could strike that?
I mean, I'm just, I just think there's so many, I don't, I, I can't, I know this is going to advertising tonight, and I hope that that generates more questions from the public, but I just think the language in here is too intrusive.
Well, you've pointed out several items that could easily be struck or amended, as you see fit by motion. Now, to put this much more generally, and to make it simpler to understand for everyone, there were really three categories of offenses, which is what we chose to call them, okay? And we voted on that word, that would permit citizens of the town to come forward and initiate a recall petition. The first category are those, those crimes, those criminal acts, okay? You know, conviction of a felony, et cetera, et cetera. You can read all the language. So in other words, if there, if there's a conviction under one of those categories, shall we say, that is sufficient to bring forward a recall petition against the council. Or if, if there's not a conviction, but if there, if there's a factual basis on which would, that would still support the evidence of a, of a crime of that nature. In other words, you know, it's, it's covering the instance of, what if someone plea bargains their way out of, out of a conviction, right? Well, they weren't convicted, but their plea, plea bargain nonetheless contained sufficient grounds to indicate that the elements of the crime were in fact evident, right? So it covers those crimes. The other section this deals with are ethical breaches, and very specifically, it states, in what we've already approved, it states that a ruling by the State Ethics Commission, okay, pretty serious stuff, that a councillor may, or that any elected official, it's not just a councillor, that any elected official in the town is subject to, that would constitute a basis, as would a ruling by the Attorney General as to some ethical breach. And, and the final group of things, which includes some of the language that you're not favorable of, is a little harder to nail down, but instances where a, a clear breach of public trust has taken place. Now, we swear an oath when we're sworn to the council, right? And among the things we attest to in that oath is our willingness and ability to attend meetings, meetings of the council, meetings of the committees that we might be also members of by virtue of our council membership. And clearly, just to give as an example, if we were negligent in that respect, arguably that could constitute a, a breach of trust. We've not lived up to the oath under which we are held, and it's a breach of public trust. So these are very serious matters, whether they're legal, ethical, or, you know, just as to a breach of trust. So I don't necessarily agree that.
I mean, I, I could see perhaps number one staying in there, but I don't think two and three need to stay in there. As far as number two goes, there are many, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but I know, we see it on TV all the time, sometimes the individual that's being accused of something might not have deep pockets and can spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for an attorney for a good defense, and they just say, "I just want to get this thing over with." And they may, they may resort to some sort of agreement, and, and in this case, that person would, could be subject to a recall in their town if they're an elected official.
If they've admitted to sufficient facts that would indicate that in fact the elements of a crime.
A lot of these things are resolved in court to avoid, to avoid an actual decision, sometimes an actual conviction, and say, hey, let's cut the person a break, it's their first time, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know the legal term for something like that, but that happens a lot. And it's, a lot of it has to do with, you know, deep pockets and not having that, you know?
But in that event, nonetheless.
It's, it's, it's a.
Could I maybe just jump in on this one?
The defendant would have admitted to sufficient facts to satisfy the elements of the crime.
If I could jump, I think, I think we understand the thought and the other idea. I think Counsel Murphy, you had a comment? Do you remember? Okay. Sorry. Counsel George, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think we can go back and forth with this all night long. I think the thing that we have to take in consideration, too, is none of this can move forward unless someone gets 10% of the registered voters, either in the town for at-large, or 10% of their district. So we're talking, you know, at-large, roughly 1,800 people signing, in a district, I'll just throw out the numbers, you know, 600 from there. So I just want everyone to understand, it's, it's not someone waking up one morning and saying, "I don't like that person," going to the clerk's office, signing a form, and initiating a recall. They have to go out and get the signatures. And I appreciate what Counsel Gallagher is saying, but I think at the end of the day, the voters want a recall provision in there. We're never gonna cover all of the bases. It's always gonna be up to interpretation, but at the end of the day, if a person can't secure enough signatures, it doesn't move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel George. Counsel Robinson?
I had a couple of questions and a couple of comments. Thank you. Under the conviction of felony and the following misdemeanors, why would it only be misdemeanors?
What section?
Well, if I could just say, from my part, I just need to fall back on something important for us to realize. This entire block of language comes from another town.
Right.
Which went to the state legislature, okay? They, they passed, for them, a bylaw amendment, right? They went to the state legislature, the state legislature approved this language, it came back to the town, it is now incorporated into the town's bylaws, and has been for, noted it previously, for several years now. So in other words, I didn't create this language, another town did it, but it's been tested. I, I can't say necessarily it's been tested in court, I don't know that that's been, anything's arisen yet, but certainly it has passed approval by the state legislature. And so I defer to the people who drafted it, and people who approved it.
Fair enough. I, my comment to that is it feels like if we are covering so many of these kind of criminal behaviors, I would like to see more serious criminal behaviors covered as well in this, so.
Well, keep in mind, if I may, one, one final point is that, remember that this is not exclusive. In other words, and there is language here that I can't put my finger on now, that talks about.
Ah, okay.
Other, other crim, this is not intended to be exhaustive.
Okay. Oh, so for instance, involving moral turpitude could be things like sexual assault, child pornography, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, great. Good, I'm good on that. I do have to say, lack of fitness, I think is a tough one.
I was gonna bring up.
Because that's the one phrase, I'm kind of like, well, who's the judge of that? I mean, look at us at the national level. We've had some national debate about what does lack of fitness mean, so that might be one that I might propose we, we strike. But fundamentally, I, yeah, those are my things for the most part. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. And just to, to piggyback on that, those are the two terms I had highlighted here. If we keep lack of fitness, I think we just need to define fitness. We need a definition of fitness that we can fall back on, and the same thing with moral turpitude. Again, that can include a wide variety of things. Say, a particular group of people within the town, you know, just, again, doesn't like a particular councillor, they don't think they're of a moral standing of whatever reason, and they want to, you know, get the 800 signatures and so forth. But what is that definition of their, their moral issue, or their fitness issue? So I think, just to, again, whether if we strike it, or if we just define those terms somehow, that just covers that, I think. It certainly would, wouldn't be a bad thing to keep it in the language, I think it just needs a definition that we could fall back on.
Any additional comments?
I see your point. I, I can't necessarily disagree with what you're saying. One way to remedy it would actually be to strike that paragraph, that subparagraph five in its entirety.
I do like parts of it. I like, I mean, again, I like a good, outside of what we've, you've already suggested that we strike, I think, you know, again, it, you know, talks about insubriety, it talks about conviction of bribery, extortion, you know, again, I definitely agree, it's a definitive thing, you know, if someone's convicted of that, and that's, you know, that's black and white. But the other ones, again, have that, that level of gray to it that is open to interpretation.
Well, I think some of these terms we're bandying about are likely already elsewhere in state law actually defined legally.
Again, if we could potentially, you know, get those definitions and include it in, potentially, I think I would be, you know, happy with the language as written if we just had definitions included with that. So there is no room for interpretation, and it's a definitive definition that would be, you know, does it meet this criteria? And again, I'm not sure, you know, if there's a state language that describes this, and maybe we can get that definition from our town attorney, and if we add that to the language, I would say I'd be happy with keeping the language in there, because I do think a certain, you know, again, level of fitness needs to be, whether it be mental, you know, I'm sure that's what we're addressing here, and then the moral turpitude certainly is a wide-ranging situation, but if there's a, a lack of that, I would think that was definitely something that should be included as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep, yep, we have a question.
If someone just, maybe town attorney can explain to me, what, why would someone, I've heard the term before, but I really don't know what, what the legal, definite, legal reasons for this would be. Why would someone be placed under guardianship or conservatorship by a probate court? What, what, what would, what's an example of what would happen?
So a good example would be someone that was deemed by a physician. Typically, you have to get a report from a physician that will be prepared by that physician, submitted to the court, that essentially. to the court, that essentially says the person is incapable of caring for themselves. Uh, they're incapacitated in some fashion. In the context of a guardianship, you would get that, and the guardian who would be appointed by that probate and family court would be the person that would then take care of medical affairs and day-in, day-out affairs of that individual because they could no longer care for themselves. In the context of a conservatorship, that would be where someone would be appointed then to handle financial affairs on behalf of those people. Um, so it requires a court process, there is a burden of proof that has to be met. That burden of proof entails the requirement under Massachusetts law that you receive a medical certificate from usually a doctor, but it can be something different than a doctor, like a social worker or someone like that who has firsthand knowledge of the individual. But that's the process by which those come about in that court.
And it, how would that become public? Like, I mean, for the, for.
Some of it is, some of it is public, some of it is not public. So, um, some of the court file would be public, and the hearing would likely be public or open to the public. Um, but some of the aspects of the court file may not be. Um, but yeah, you, you could likely look up that there is a conservatorship or guardianship of an individual.
And then these, these happen to people at any age from?
Any age, right. It, they even have, I mean, in, in your context, it's irrelevant, but they have guardianships over minors, right? You hear of that all the time. And then as people age, um, they become incapacitated, and, I mean, this is a very common area of law. Happens all the time.
Okay. Um, so maybe just a few thoughts on this one. So my general feeling on this is I feel like we've gone from zero to 100 with the language. We have, we have no recall, and then we're also, I think for all the right reasons, trying to architect a surgically precise sort of recall mechanism, and kind of brainstorm all the things that could, could happen with that. So I, I'm a little hesitant that we may over-index and really not understand the implications of even something like insubriety while performing official functions. All of us know the implication of that, but if someone's out at a official dinner and has a glass of wine, are they all of a sudden subject? Like, I think, I think there's just a lot here that I just want to make sure we're intentionally, like, flipping that switch. I agree with Dr. Perry. I think lack of fitness, and councillor Robinson said this too, anything where we're the judge of, or somebody else gets to, like, define the rule just makes me nervous. I think we need to be really specific. So I think my, my general feeling is I think it's close, but it probably needs a little, probably needs each of us to maybe think through, you know, what, what, what motions are we proposing, and what language would we change so that we could act on it. Um, so my general feeling is it's probably not quite kind of baked for, and ready for, uh, advertising. Councillor, or Dr. Perry?
I would just make a motion, then we, um, potentially send it back to subcommittee just to address our concerns that we're mentioning here tonight. Again, potentially defining a couple of these other terms in there, that maybe we can get legal definitions added, and see if that, at that point in time, it would be more palatable by the council to move forward with.
Like that. From a procedural perspective, we have a motion on the table to approve for advertising. We have a second to that. Do we vote that first, such as a no, and then vote this, or does, can this just supersede it?
You know what, whoever made the motion could withdraw the motion.
Okay.
And then you could vote a new motion.
Do we remember who made the motion? I feel like that was.
Okay.
Did we not make, oh, even better.
We're still in discussion on it.
All right, perfect. Uh, so.
My motion would carry then.
So we have a motion, do we have a second to send back to? We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay. Um, all those, we can do a voice vote, all those in favor of sending it back to Rules and Procedures to consider the feedback, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, we have two nays. Um, the ayes win. Um, good discussion, thank you all. All right, we are in the home stretch. Uh, we are now on agenda item M, old business. We have none. Agenda item N, new, new business. Uh, order O F Y 24 012, general fund free cash allocation. Um, I will defer to the town manager for a quick introduction.
Mr. President, this, uh, ordinance is your annual allocation of our, uh, free cash, and, uh, it gets distributed into several buckets, as you are well aware. Um, and I would recommend that it get referred to, uh, Finance Committee and Budget and Finance Committee as well.
Great, thanks. Any question for the town manager? All right.
So move to refer to Finance?
Yep, a motion to refer to Budget and Finance. We have a motion.
And Finance.
Oh, sorry, and Finance Committee. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Uh, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, uh, we can do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay. Um, now we're moving on to item O, citizen comment.
Okay.
Yep.
I've been waiting patiently and I've been taking notes.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. You say the open meeting law requires broadcasting. May I suggest a very good device for encouraging participation? You don't broadcast the meeting until 24 or 48 hours later, forcing people to attend. But how will people have notice? They will have notice because you will put on the agenda the week before. So they will have, what are the topics to be discussed, and then they can come in person if they are interested. Okay? I think that would encourage participation. Point of information, participation dropped from town meeting as soon as the thing started getting broadcast. Okay? So, um, we also have, um, signs that already exist for the, um, elections. We have one on 104, but I suggest we need more, like, um, Mr. Lindy suggested, permanent metal signs, and it would be helpful if things would be posted in the process for the public, such as, post when is the deadline to take out candidate papers? Post when is the deadline, or when is the primary election? Post when the general election is coming up. If you post all those things, people driving by will see them. The signs that we have at present are terribly underused. All they are used for is to remind us that our taxes are due. That's the only thing that goes up on those signs there at 104 and whatnot. So I think we ought to have posting of all things on the signs, and you'll have participation better. Another thing, we're looking at the, uh, TV screen here, I think your names should be posted in large letters so that the people know who is speaking what way. And then there can be accountability of the councillors to the taxpayers. Okay? Now, I think the annual stipend issue must have a ballot vote. Okay? If it doesn't have a ballot vote, that would be grounds for a recall petition because that's cutting out the voters on such an important thing as how to spend our taxpayer money for the stipends, which is coming out of the bucket of taxpayer money. Okay?
We have, sorry, 15 seconds left.
Another thing, uh, three minutes, okay.
Uh, 15 seconds, yeah.
One other thing that needs to be done, we shouldn't have our annual town elections on school vacation week. Talk about discouraging people to vote when they're out of town on the family vacation? Give me a break. Let's reschedule them when people are in town. Okay?
And we are up at time.
On my other notes. Oh, yes. My last note is, the general fund free cash allocation, what buckets does that go into?
So we do have, I apologize, we do have a three-minute limit, um, but we'll, we'll all be around after.
Okay. So I don't get the questions answered? I allow, I'm allowed to question you, but I get no answers?
It is, and that's by, um, that's by open meeting law design, because we haven't posted those topics, uh, for discussion on the agenda. But we're, we're after, we're around after, we'll follow up with you.
But you're going to post things in advance?
Yep.
So that people will have advanced.
Your time is up.
The agenda.
Your time is up. I'm going to ask you to sit down now, please, but I will be here, and I'll, I'll come spend some time with you after the meeting to make sure we answer all of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be watching the council. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, uh, the next, do we have anyone else from the council, or from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Uh, the next item we have is item Q, executive session. Uh, we have no executive session this evening. Uh, oh, sorry. Uh, P, council comments. We do have council comments. Yeah. So we'll start with councillor Robinson this evening.
Um, I'm just going to make one comment tonight. I know that so many people have been watching in the world around, uh, this latest outbreak of war in the Middle East once again. Um, and not to make any political stance, but just wanted to put my thoughts and concerns and compassion out to those who feel affected by these world events. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Uh, councillor McKinnon?
No comments for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor George?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Gallagher?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, very briefly, uh, we had a very vigorous debate on some important matters, uh, this evening. I, I thank everyone for your willingness to engage and, uh, get a little deeper into the weeds than maybe we anticipated, but, um, I think it's all for the best, and, uh, I appreciate your time and your input. That's all.
Thank you, councillor Chase. Councillor Murphy?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the town administration for the community workshop that we held. I think it was a great turnout and a wonderful model moving forward for, uh, how we can gauge community feedback. So, uh, again, just thank you for all those that were involved, and was really happy with those that turned out.
Great, thank you. Uh, Dr. Perry?
Uh, thank you. Uh, echo of the sentiments, uh, councillor Murphy, I, again, there was a, a great presentation put on by, uh, Bob Rulli, and, uh, we had, again, good turnout, 250-plus residents came on out, uh, to the event, and, uh, you know, we all kind of worked the room and worked the different, uh, tables that were there. We got lots of feedback, uh, lots of, lots of posted notes were placed on board, so we're going to take all that information and, uh, and put it to good use. I also want to, uh, commend the BBA, uh, for another good Autumn Fest that they just put on recently. Uh, the weather somewhat cooperated, didn't completely rain on, on everybody, and, uh, again, a lot of work that they put on to put that event on every year. So want to congratulate them on, on their, uh, Autumn Fest this year. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, councillor Lindy?
Yes, a couple of thank yous. I just wanted to thank the Rules and Procedures Committee for their hard work, and I think it was an excellent discussion that we had tonight. I want to thank people for coming and doing citizen input, and I also want to thank people for, uh, personal expressions of support for my recent illness. Um, I wanted to let people know, uh, I believe our town clerk is doing a forum to encourage people to, uh, run for office, I think it's November 4th, um, for council and library and town clerk. Um, I also wanted to put in a pitch like we did for the 4th of July, that, uh, the committee, uh, the BIA is trying to, uh, fund the lights on the common again with Winter Wonderful, and I believe they're doing a fundraiser on November 11th. And last but not least, I've been asked multiple times by constituents, and it was brought up at last month's meeting about the flag at the library, and I'm hoping I can figure out when that's going to happen, maybe at the next council meeting.
Okay.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Ask and ye shall receive.
Thank you.
Done.
Okay.
All right. Uh, thank you, councillor Lindy. Uh, so I think it's just me. Uh, first one to thank new participants this evening. Uh, we do really appreciate, uh, the feedback and the involvement, uh, both in this meeting but also outside of it. Um, so feel free to reach out with, uh, emails. Some of us have, uh, office hours, we're certainly at events. Um, but thank you. Thank you for showing up and sharing your ideas. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, to say is, um, to everybody who showed up at, um, the workshop, uh, I was overwhelmed with, uh, the number of people from the town that came out to be part of that. Uh, you know, kind of irregardless of sort of which side of the project you were on, the fact that you showed up, shared your ideas, spent time learning about our ideas, um, was truly appreciated. And as others have said, I think it's, um, it's a great sort of step forward for our town. Um, and I would encourage, you know, I've seen some sort of follow-up comments on social media and elsewhere, um, where people might have just a piece of the story, but maybe not the full story. So if, if you are starting to kind of get engaged with that idea for downtown, I would really encourage you to spend some time on that website and really, um, you know, take advantage of all of the hard work that Bob Rulli and others have done to just share everything we know, uh, with the community. It's a great starting point, um, can help you inform whatever decision you make about it. Um, so, uh, really appreciated that. Um, I think we also had some amazing, uh, sort of debate tonight, and really appreciated the effort and time that went into it, uh, and all the different ideas. I certainly, I think, um, we are trying to find new ways to engage with the town. We want to make sure we get the charter right, and we're putting the time into it. I think all of these things are, are signs that we're pushing things in the right direction. So thank you all. Uh, with that, uh, I think we're done. I'll move on to Q, executive session. We have none. R, adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thanks.